How are you doing? I don't know if this is a bigger crowd than normal or if we're spread out in a different way. Thank you for being here. This is the November Town Hall. And we appreciate you being here. We will start with a moment of silence to center ourselves for all the fun stuff from Recovery Day. All right, thank you very much. All right, agenda, there may be some changes. I gotta text Carson on my way over here. I was at my parent, my kids' parent teacher conference, but I believe he's running late. So if he's not here when it's his turn, he gets skipped and we'll figure that out when he gets here. So we'll start with some community updates. I wanted to go back to something we've done before. We haven't, we haven't done this in a while, but requests, response. So I've had a few people come see me individually about this. And I don't know if the communication's been very clear, but the request was made last year for automatic door openers on the Villa front doors. And I think there was some mixed communication there. But so the first thing we did when it was time to write the budget was make sure that got in there. So that is in there. Mark is here. Mark is pricing that for us. And once we get the equipment, everything we need, that will, that installation will begin. The other is the pond walkway and the sidewalk connection around the West Neighborhoods. I know we covered this during the rate increase meeting, the budget meeting, I should say. And we talked about some of the upcoming projects. But I think again, I've had some people come to me with questions that were some mixed feedback. So just to be clear, this is the project that will make a sidewalk that matches the one on the far side of the pond, so you can completely walk around the pond on a sidewalk. We're also going to connect all the sidewalks on the West Neighborhoods. There's a few sections of sidewalk where you have to either go in the road or go in the grass because the sidewalk stops. We're gonna connect those. And then Mark and I during our meeting yesterday, he let me know that we are going to fix some of the crosswalk areas, and a few people have raised concerns to him too. So that will begin in 2026. And it is weather dependent, so we're not gonna give you a definite timeline yet because we can't predict the weather that far in advance, if at all. And we don't wanna, we don't wanna set anybody up for some disappointment. But next year that will begin. And we're using the same vendor that did the bocce courts at Guilford. So when they wrap that up, we'll start to get a good plan in place. The other was the West Neighborhood front entrance. There's restrooms on your way to Cobles. I don't know, all of a sudden. On your way to Cobles. And those restrooms are a little outdated. They got some things, some wallpaper peeling, that kind of thing. We have a plan in place. We're getting everything together to remodel those bathrooms and to make them something that we're proud of. You know, when folks come here for an event, that's one of the first things they see. If you're at an event in Cobles, that's the bathroom you can use. If you're waiting on a gas to use that restroom, they, they just don't match our quality that we would like our common spaces to be. So we are gonna do that.
The toilet speed behind it is so comfortable.
The toilets will be so high. Unbelievable how high they are. Somebody, somebody figured you're gonna need a ladder. We will, we will take all of that into consideration. Mark's getting all that together. We did, aesthetically, we wanna get as close to the wellness center as possible. We like to have everything cohesive. The toilet height, we are all very well aware of the pitfalls associated with that. No, no pun intended. Never mind. A new bus, so we announced that we were purchasing a new bus. We are purchasing a new bus. We went and did a test drive of one. Weren't really crazy about it. I would say it was not a success. So we've reached out, we've all kinda split up and started doing research, reached out to other communities, see if they've got a bus that we can test drive. We're just, we really wanna get this right. So this is more to really drive home that we are doing this. I had somebody say, well, why haven't you bought the bus yet? This is just to really reiterate that this is a big decision. It's a big purchase. We wanna make sure we get it right. We're doing our due diligence. And we're gonna...
Ice cream.
Big bus, big bus with nice shocks. Rattle your teeth out when we hit bumps, all those things. So we were actually, we were at a conference, and part of that conference is a trade show. And they actually had two buses parked inside of the trade show. We went and took a look at them. One of them had some promise, so we got that information. We're gonna see what we can find. But we're just taking our time with that because we really wanna get that right. I think I wanna play a game next. I do. What should I do? First answer is play this game with Matt. So this actually, this was an idea. I'm looking for the person who gave it to me. I don't see her. I do see her. So, two questions, so very low stakes. What should I do? I find myself stuck on the elevator. Should I? A, panic. B, yell for help and knock on the doors. C, use my cellphone to call someone. Or D, press the emergency call button and use the alarm button. All of the above isn't an acceptable answer, but the one, the most right is D. So there is, in every elevator, a button, this one. That calls out to the monitoring company. They notify us, they notify the fire department, they see people on the way. Now, the button above it, sorry, this is what it looks like in the Villas, a little bit different. The button above it sounds an alarm as long as you hold it in. And so this person who, who made this suggestion to me was walking by and heard that alarm. So definitely, you know, hit the button to call out, people are on the way. But if you're really concerned or you are panicking, that button sounds an alarm, an audible alarm. And so anybody walking by the elevator shaft could hear that. Sounds kinda like a whistle. So with that in mind, I'm walking by the elevator and I hear the alarm sounding. I should panic, notify security, make note of the situation, and tell everyone at dinner at my vulnerability meeting, or ignore it because it's not my problem. And those are kinda funny because we know, just notify security. And that goes for anything. If something's out of the ordinary, just notify security. But especially in this case, if you're walking by the elevator and you hear that loud whistling sound or somebody beating on the door, let them know. They probably already know. The monitoring company will call and let us know, the fire department, we have a good relationship with them. They're on their way to get somebody in the elevator, out of the elevator, we do know it. But, you know, the more the merrier, so.
Is there a button on the outside that a person can push to be in this happening?
Uh, no, no. No button also. The question was, is there a button on the outside that you could push to be the hero? Unfortunately, no, but you could let security know. And then this is a friendly reminder that the numbers in Icon Directory, staff numbers with the exception of maybe one person, are office lines, landlines. So they do not receive texts. We've had a few people say, well, I text you and you didn't get that. Or I text you this information and I was waiting to hear from you and you never got back to me. And so when we investigated that, we tried to figure out what was going on. We found out that they were texting a landline, and so we can't get those. So those numbers, the best way, shoot an email to somebody or call them, or go down and ask your receptionist, where the heck is Mark or next Sydney? And they'll help find them. Just a friendly reminder there. Looking around the room and I don't, I do see him. He's here. You're like me. I came flying in the parking lot and I'm out of breath. I did, well, I had this off Carson, I did wanna make mention, I don't know if we did any of the housekeeping, but the Q and A portion, save your questions till the end. And then we're gonna do it a little bit differently because we do have folks joining us virtually from the Guilford campus. So we'll cover that a little bit closer to time, but we've already had some good questions. And I just want all the folks across the bridge to miss Ellen. I'm actually gonna start by welcoming up our volunteers for this year's President Financial Assistance Campaign. So Lloyd, Jolene, Kayla, if y'all don't mind coming to join in today.
Folks, we're in great shape, and we thank you all for participating and raising a bunch of money. We've got a little bit more to go, but we're gonna get there. Last spring, we had a special session that explained why we're asking money for the various opportunities, including the Residents Assistant Fund. I just wanted to reiterate, it's a choice that you make. I hope that you give it some thought and you think about sharing your blessings with others who are less fortunate. That's all I need to say. Thank you.
Just as a reminder, these funds are helping those who just can't afford the care that they need anymore. And Friends Homes, you know, we have this promise that you will receive that care no matter what. And we'll find a way to bridge that gap in funding, and this is how we do it. We help our neighbors, we give. And I'm very proud to say that many, many of you in this room give to support that. Thank you. I found myself very moved and touched over these past months by the outpouring of generosity from you, from your family members and from staff. So I just wanna thank you. The campaign runs through the end of the year. We'll send out some piece of information about IRA giving because as a reminder, you need to either take your required minimum distribution or maybe a better option, give it to a nonprofit, a 501(c)(3) charitable organization, such as Friends Homes, before the 31st of December. So if you have questions about that, please see me, otherwise just be on the lookout. And thank you again. Really appreciate it. Okay, this is the last, one of two, the second of two slides. We will be having a, okay, sorry. We will be having a session with Mimi Blackwell from Friends Fiduciary, who Friends Homes is one of our investment partners. She is the Director of Philanthropic Services, and she's been here before to share about charitable giving and estate planning, things of that nature. And she'll be talking through different tax advantaged giving strategies, both during and after your lifetime. So we'd love you to join us with hot chocolate and some seasonal treats. And, you know, it should be... Well, uh... Okay, I think I have the wrong date up there. So Wednesday, it'll be in, I think I copied some texts from before. Sorry about that. This will be in the, in the upcoming connection, so be on the lookout there. Again, sorry about that. Monday, the 8th, yes, Monday, the 8th, that's when it will be, at 10 a.m. And then the second one, for those of you in the room who have included Friends Homes in your estate plans, you will know certainly who you are, and we have Legacy Circle members here. We have our annual appreciation luncheon coming up. And this year, we're gathering with the Conturra Society members once again at Pinewood Country Club. And so if you have not sent in your RSVP, please do so by the end of the week so we can get those numbers. And if you have included Friends Homes in your estate plans and have not notified us and are not part of the Legacy Circle, we would certainly love to include you. Just reach out to me. That's it for you. Thank you all again.
Good afternoon, everyone. Tim Zook, Director of Planning Services. And we're gonna go through some updates. So yesterday, we got together a small group of people that are gonna be our test group for making reservations for Cobles. We had a good meeting, kinda ran through the process with them, and it will be starting on the 17th. They'll be making reservations for Cobles on the Icon website. And we will be testing it to see if there's any glitches, any issues. We're gonna run that through the, I wanna say it's three weeks, we're running it for three weeks. And then we will reevaluate and see when we're gonna be ready to roll it out to the whole population. We're real excited about it. It'll make it much better for us to plan ahead for larger parties and groups that all come at one time. It will give the dining manager Kevin a good opportunity to pre-plan for all those events when we have groups larger than six, seven, eight, nine, 10. So we'll wanna come on that as soon as we go through the test run for that. We, last month's Happy or Not scores, Cobles was at 94% positive. I believe that was two points up from the previous month. Ruth was 91% positive, and it was 86% positive. Ruth was also one point above the previous month, which is really remarkable. I'm really, really proud of my staff with all the things that are going on at the Ruth, with the moving of the dining room to the living room and having to change the menus a few times. I'm real, real happy with that score there. So you'll see, we had 900-plus comments for Cobles, 273-plus for Ruth, and 125 over the Hub. So we're getting a good, good amount of comment cards. And those comment cards, if you're giving them to your server, are being entered at the end of the evening there. So continue to do that for us. That gives us the quickest information that we can have to get anything adjusted, if we need to have that adjusted. So thank you very much for doing that. And then those ideas or those comments and concerns are brought up at the Dining Committee, and we go through the high points of where we need to improve our service or food or things of that nature. And the Dining Committee has been very, very helpful with all of those. Upcoming events, Resident Holiday Dinners, the 17th will be over here in the West Dining Room, Cobles. The 18th will be over in Guilford. New Year's Eve, obviously, both, both sides will have the same event going on. In January, date to be determined, we're gonna have the Taste of Home event and the Travel the World event in January also. So we're gonna be real anxious to get that information out to you as the next couple weeks go on. So we have the Ruth refresh, obviously, is still going on. We've got the new uniforms there. Brent, the executive sous chef, decided to wear the uniform for us the other day and take a photo. There's a mock-up of what the dining room tables are gonna look like with the bluish placemat and the gold napkins. There's some green accents on some of the dining room china. So we're real happy. China actually showed up yesterday, so it's already in the building. So we're gonna do an inventory of that, make sure we got everything we ordered. And the uniforms should be here shortly, so we're really anticipating the opening of the Ruth. Re-opening of the Ruth. Don't have a timeline yet. Maybe Mark can go into that a little bit more later on, but we're still looking at December sometime. There is a conversation that was going on with a group of residents and at the Food Committee with Walker Parking, so we do have a plan for that over at the Ruth to be able to alleviate clutter in the walkway so that people don't trip over it. So we've got a plan moving forward on that, and we'll go into that in a little more detail when it gets closer to opening of the Ruth. And we're gonna go to Whitney now. Thank you very much, everybody. Appreciate you.
Good afternoon. My name is Whitney Ariza. I'm the Director of Campus Life, and I have a few highlights to share with you. The first being, the West Gift Shop has opened back up. The hours are Monday, Wednesday, Friday, 10 a.m. to 12 p.m. They do anticipate opening on Tuesdays and Thursdays in the afternoons relatively soon, so we'll post that when it happens. You can pay with cash, check, or charge it to your monthly statement. That does not mean that you can use service credits, so it'll actually show up on your monthly statement as a bill to pay. And we need volunteers. If you've seen in the gift shop, we've got a lot of new products in there, and we are eager to have some volunteers help us run the gift shop. We need people to work the register, organize cards, help with ideas. So if you're interested in helping in the gift shop, please see Mary Wallace. Am I really loud, like I'm yelling? A few things coming up. We are going to the Greensboro Urban Ministry Food Pantry on Wednesday, November 19th, at 1 p.m. Should be a really interesting trip. I found it great, the way they run their pantry is it's set up like a grocery store. So folks can go in and actually shop and get what they want instead of just getting handed a box of, you know, whatever supplies they have. But you actually get to shop, so it's a very dignified way for folks to be able to come in. So tour on Wednesday, November 19th. We're also traveling Friday, November 21st. We're gonna go see the National D-Day Memorial, which is in Bedford, Virginia, and we'll eat lunch in Bedford. And then on the 26th of November, we're gonna head to the Chinese Lantern Festival, and we'll do dinner at Lucky 32 in Cary. So that should be really fun, and that bottom picture is an example of what you'll see there. And then one thing that just got added that we're really excited about, it's not in the connection, so make yourself a note of this. Friday, November 28th, right after Thanksgiving, Ian Hurdlicka is gonna come and play the classical guitar. Ian is getting his doctorate at the Peabody Institute of Music, and you may recognize his last name. He is the grandson of Win Hurdlicka, a resident at Guilford. And he's gonna be in the Fox Con Course performing, and I've heard he's excellent, so make a note of that. A few reminders about transportation. We have begun rotating the pickup location when we do bus pickup. So for the month of November, the bus starts here at West and then goes and picks up residents at Guilford. In December, it will flip. We'll start at Guilford and then come pick up at West. So it's really important that you are there at the designated time. You could be first or you might be second. If you don't wanna have to worry about it, just be there at the right time. We will not leave until that designated time. And we are thinking about doing a talent show on New Year's Eve. I heard an OG's out there. We have a lot of talented residents here. We are looking for performers, musicians, artists, dancers, comedians, any type of talent that you may be willing to share. We wanna hear about it. Contact Mary Wallace or Cassidy Holt. We're gonna ask staff to be a part of the talent show too. So December 31st, over at Guilford. And before I pass it to Jasmine, I just wanna say really quick, we had a great Veterans Day program yesterday, and we... I just wanted to tell you all, we appreciate all the positive feedback, and the staff worked really hard, so it's great to hear that from you all. We intuited just as much as you did, and it was an honor to be able to put on that program yesterday.
Hello, everyone. Jasmine Hernandez, Wellness Director. And I wanted to talk about our eight-week weight loss. So we completed this program recently. We had 12 participants complete the program. 37 pounds were lost, so that's about 44.5 inches together. So the program consists of two workouts per week and then meeting with one nutritional presentation each week. And so the objective of this wasn't about what can I eat, what can I not eat. It was about creating a healthy lifestyle instead of a strict dieting. So we want you to be successful even after the eight weeks are up. And so we will be offering this program again for those who are interested or signed up in January. But I thought it would be best to bring someone here, Rebecca, to just give you a quick highlight of what this program was about.
Well, it's about losing weight. I wanna thank Jasmine, Kayla, and Riley for their role in this program. They were excellent in organizing the information we needed, providing a safe environment to share that with us and for us to talk to each other, and gave us exercises to do, information on nutrition. It was really a good program, well organized and well done. When I was a kid, we would go to church a lot. And when we were driving home after being at church, there was a little chorus that came from the backseat of the car saying, "Ice cream, you spring, we all spring for ice cream." How many people did that? Well, it was, it was a frequent sounding thing in our car. And my dad, being who he was, would pull into Kay's Castle Ice Cream there in Chattanooga so we could get cones. Well, when he was doing that, I was growing up and I was skinny as could be, and I could eat anything I wanted. My mother even gave me nutritional milkshakes with fat in them so that I would gain weight. It did nothing. I, I think that when I became able to vote, I started to expand. It was, you know, in my twenties that I started having to pay attention to what I put in my mouth, but I still loved ice cream. So in my situation as relates to this program, I, you know, go to the doctor, Dr. Gubis is very good, and she gave me a brand-new diagnosis. And I thought, mm, really, there's not much she can do for my new diagnosis. I mean, what it's like, you get those all the time at our age at least. I do. And along came this information on the weight loss program. And I thought, I can't do much directly for that particular diagnosis, but I can do some stuff indirectly for it, and that is start managing my eating and my calorie intake and my exercise a whole lot better. So I went to as many of their meetings as I could because I have other obligations. Wasn't able to go sometimes. But I really stuck to my commitment to cut down on eating. When I started this program, I had half a pint of ice cream in my freezer. It stayed there for several weeks, and then one night I just couldn't stand it, so I had that half a pint. But I didn't buy any new ice cream, and I haven't bought any new ice cream since then. I'm kinda proud of myself for that. What's been interesting is that my tastes have changed. Eight weeks of being more conscientious about eating really helped me get to a point that I can manage my eating better. And so I commend the program to you. It's, it's fun and it's useful. Thank you.
And I wanna thank you all for helping participate, even from our very first group. It is a commitment, and it is about being just aware and conscious. And it's just each a, this program, you just need eight weeks just to rewire that brain. So we're really excited. We hope that this just brings some excitement for you, so just keep an eye out because in December, we will have interest meetings. So the last thing I'm gonna talk about is gobbled for good. I don't know if anyone has heard of this yet because it started Monday. So when you enter in here, we had a box from Urban Ministry. Maybe some of you've already placed some canned goods in there. We have a staff versus resident food drive. And so I think this is just the perfect timing in such uncertain times, so needed. And so we have a list of items most needed. Feel free to look what you can purchase or what you can bring. There are three different locations for drop-off. We have one here in the West Mount Room. Guilford is in the Woolman Mill Room, and then we have a drop-off at Whittier. And so we have, you know, from November 10th to December 1st, so it's not too late. And so we're just, we're very, very excited to partner with Urban Ministry and just to be a small part or something big. So if you have any questions, feel free to connect with me or Mary Wallace in the book. Okay, that's it for me.
Hello, everybody. Glad to see you all. So I'm gonna give you a volunteer update. So some volunteer opportunities that we have right now would be transporting residents in higher levels of care to the beauty shop. We wanna try to keep as many nurses and CNAs on the floor as possible, so it is helpful for people to offer to take them to the beauty shop so they can have that service done. for people to offer to take them to the beauty shop so they can have that service done. There are a few people who have requested a flower program to decorate the inside of the building, so if anyone is interested in doing that, that's something that I can help you guys get started. And then also in higher levels of care, helping leading and participating in games, activities, and crafts, so, you know, giving residents in higher levels of care, helping them get to those games, participating with them, and helping it be really enjoyable for them. And we also already have some volunteers in the volunteer program right now, so we do have a few different independent living residents that are visiting and reading to residents in higher levels of care. We have a few that help pass out the mail in assisted living and skilled nursing, both here at West and Guilford. Also have some people that help pass out the menus and help residents fill those out. Who can't see as well anymore, who can't write anymore, so they help them with that. And then we have a resident who spent her whole life in theater, who is performing and reading for residents in Magnolia, and they've been really enjoying that, so we're very thankful for her. And I do just want to, every time we talk about the volunteer program, make it really clear that visiting your friends in healthcare and assisted living is not the same as volunteering. We encourage you to go visit those friends that you've had for a long time and go see them when they move. If you do not know someone and you're wanting to go in and spend time with them, that would be considered a volunteer program opportunity. So that's the difference. If you are interested in that part, you would come see me. If you have a longstanding friendship with them, please by all means, go visit them and spend time with them. So just to clarify, that's the difference. If you have any other questions about volunteering, let me know.
Good afternoon, everyone. I am Mark Ford, the Director of Maintenance, and I have a few slides and a lot of photos for us today. But starting with some general updates, I know I've made some people in this room happy and I've made some people in this room angry. I'm sorry, we've made the change over to heat for the winter time. It's really tricky with the weather, so we always try to do that when temperatures are consistently dropping. But for those of us who live in North Carolina all the time, the fall can be a tumultuous point. I don't know if our systems would survive as well as they did when it was 24 degrees here just the other morning, but knowing that it's going to be in the 70s this weekend, it's a tough pill to swallow when we have a system where I can't change from one to the other in less than 48 hours. So it takes some time, it takes a lot of energy to make things work well and efficiently. Sorry, I'm trying to do the best I can to find the middle road to please as many people as possible and have the systems work as efficient. We also went around, we picked up all the hoses. We didn't have anything freezing bus this past cold snap, that's good. We'll probably do that again as temperatures get back into the freezing times, but just know that it's something that we do need to do regular building winterization anytime we get into those freezing events. Our semi-annual HAAC filter changes are coming. And I really wanted to do this for a long time. I'm committing to you now in front of the world and the recording cameras in the back. We're going to change the filters every six months. We're going to do them in the fall, we're going to do them in the spring. The idea is to try to do it after the initial fall of the leaves, then let particles in the air and the ground, this sort of thing, but if caught in the filter, I'm going to change it going into the winter. And then same thing this spring, after the big fall, the pollen falls, gets caught in these filters, we'll change them out so there's good clean filters going into the summer. So we're going to do them all the week of the 17th. The entire maintenance team will be going through as a group and going to the areas listed on the screen. So Monday, the 17th, we'll be doing all the Fox and Hobbs. On Tuesday, the 18th, we'll be doing Whittier, Frye, and Wollman. Wednesday, the 19th, we'll be doing the Guilford and West Collin areas. When I say that, I mean like rooms like these, or admin spaces, or meeting spaces, non-resident living spaces. On Thursday, we'll be here at the West Campus, going to 1,000 to 5,000 areas. And Friday, the 21st, we'll be doing the Villas Town Halls and Cottages. Now for those that are really analyzing this and behind me, you'll see that the West Healthcare venues are not including this in this week. We just did those a few weeks ago, so those are already taken care of. But we're going to start getting everybody in that same six-month pattern of changing our filters, and that's the reasoning behind it. So going into some more fun stuff, project updates. At West Campus, we are working on the Magnolia hallway refresh. Those who walked in recently, you'll see one side is looking brand-new, the other side's not, and we'll keep making progress there. Here at the Guilford campus, we've got a lot going on. You can see a lot of photos of it. We've got the roof renovations, we've got the bocce court installation, and we're still chipping away at the Wollman elevator refresh, still in-house, trying to keep costs down and our resources are getting pulled in a lot of ways, but I think it's making improvements. And then I've got a photo of the Purchase Bathing Area refurbishment, just want to show her the shower a little bit now. It's a great improvement. So on to the photos. Here is the current state of the roof dining. So this is if you walked in and went to the eating area on the left, you'll see a lot of things. I've got all the light fixtures wrapped up, we're protecting those. We are storing some toilets in space because as a piece of this project, we're renovating the restrooms as well. And there's nothing wrong with five out of six of those toilets, so we're going to clean them and everything will be put back in its place. Moving angles to the assisted living dining room, looking back towards the other larger part of the roof, you can see a lot of materials and things, but what I want to draw your attention to is you don't see a lot of red brick anymore. So we've painted the brick, it really brightens the place up, makes it have a fresher look, definitely seems more airy and more space. Here's another angle. This would be if you walked in the, I would call them the main doors, and went to the right, kind of looking out to the windows. The biggest change here, again, is the painting of brick, and you'll see, it's kind of hard to see, but there's a little bit of a box-looking building, it's the enclosed server spaces where they're going to be clinking the glasses and that sort of thing behind the walls. And then here's another shot kind of diagonal across the room, looking back, and you'll see some little nooks and kind of private dining-type, more intimate seating spaces that we've carved out in some of the architecture. So it's a big change. I think it'd be exciting for everybody to be a part of. And here's a shot of where those toilets used to be, in the restrooms straight outside. If anybody's been over there lately, there's a lot of jackhammering, a lot of noise. I'm sorry, that tile's hard to get up, but it's got to go. So we're doing a lot of work over there at the roof area. Tim asked me to provide some updates. We are striving hard to finish in December. Working through. That's all I can share right now. Bocce. So bocce is coming along. It's not quite there yet, but it's good enough for me to share a photo. So that's why I'm texting photos this morning. We're stretching out the turf today. We've got some products that we're going to put in the turf to make them feel really good and right. We still have to run the wood bumpers kind of around the edges, and we're putting some paper and, you know, coping around the sides. So it should turn out really nice. A lot of accessories and landscaping to do, but it's coming along. Here's a couple of different angles. And we've created some new sidewalks to kind of get to. A lot of folks are asking, how do I get there? And you can get there from kind of the sidewalk near the marketing house over here, 22 Hobbs. There's one more to look at. And then this is the bathroom that I mentioned in the Purchase area over at Whittier. Again, just a big improvement of what used to be there. And it's a nice, full, easily accessible, good for the residents, good for the staff, able to provide better care. It's brighter, it's cleaner, it's just a better space and giving some dignity to that bathing That's all I have prepared. We're holding questions to the end.
Hey, everybody. I'm Daryl Shores, I'm the Director of Evis and Rhyans. So a few updates. About a month ago or so, I sent out a memo to everybody on Icon saying that part of the monthly cleans that we do include balcony, patio, and porch. So as your scheduled meetings or your scheduled cleans partake, I'll have another floor tech that will be cleaning the outside of your patios and porches as part of your monthly clean for the months of November and April and May, kind of following that same guideline that Mark just brought up about the filters that we'll be doing in the fall and the spring essentially. So I wrote under April, May, depending on the pollings. We want to make sure to be cleaning those balconies and porches at the end of the pollen season, so that we're not having that buildup and, you know, that yellow film developing. So part of the balcony clean is going to be cleaning of the interior balcony windows and exterior, cleaning of the sliding glass doors of the track, wiping down your furniture if you have it, and then sweeping or vacuuming the floor. Now that started this month. I've heard a whole lot of negative feedback about it, and it seemed like it's going pretty smoothly there, so we're going to continue to do that. Hopefully, this works out best for everybody. Next thing, the fun window washing. So that's going to start in January. We're going to try to still tweak it. I think last year went a lot smoother. There's still some things that I think that we can do somewhat better. We'll be using the same vendor though, so Window Hero will be doing that same. Again, we'll have maps released to everybody to kind of show the color coordinate as far as like when to expect to see those window washers. Like I said, that should be coming here soon, so I have a meeting with them tomorrow and we'll kind of define what is being done and when. And then I'll send that out to everybody so you've got it. But, in that sense, like I said, I want to try to still tweak it to make it better for everybody. So this year, Window Hero, last year, just removed the screens from the exterior, and then my team cleaned them, and then Mark's team came behind us and then put them back in. So it seemed like a little bit of just cumbersome, but we've got a little bit more streamlined process there, especially on the exterior. Window Hero actually taking the screens down, washed them directly below, and then handing them back up to be reinstalled. Now those of you that have interior window screens, there's going to be a little bit more of a plan to kind of follow along with that, and that'll be included in my memo to those, so there'll be no questions there. But feel free to reach out if it's still making sense to you. So again, that's going to start mid-January, so we still got a little bit more time to build after that, but I'll get out some information to everybody soon. Next thing I want to talk about is pest control. So I don't know if everybody knows, but I'm over the pest control vendor as far as like keeping everything out up here. And if you have something inside, please let us know. It's the same model that we would talk about with work orders with maintenance. No small problem is too big, report it to us, and we will have our technician. We switched to a different pest control company called Wildwood Pest Control. They're based out of the Kernerville, Winston-Salem area. Our technician's name, his name is Sage, super great guy, very easy to talk to, very knowledgeable, willing to help you do whatever your issues may be. So again, we don't know if there's an issue until it's reported. So the best way for you to help us combat that is to report it as soon as you see it. So if you just see one bug, please let us know, okay? He's here on Thursdays, so every Thursday, he is here to service the West Campus. But that doesn't say that he won't come in between if it's a big enough issue. He's at Guilford on Tuesdays, West on Thursdays. And if you do the work order, just again, order through Icon, call, put it in, and you'll resource it to the right person there. Last thing I want to touch on is, I'm sure most of you have seen it, is the grounds update. A little background, the month of October, we did our aeration, plugging, insert word, all kinds of things, but that's where we pulled those plugs out of the ground, and then that helps with compaction and helps with that, so that the seed fall into a crevice when we overseed. So we overseed the entire community with Fescue, which is the turf choice that we are trying to go after, just because we're kind of in the glory lot state here, so it's cool season grass, and which is Fescue survives really well here in the south. And then we have green pretty much all year long if we get established one. So that's kind of the goal there. We completed that in October. Around the Villas, we did something called top dressing, where we added a little layer of top dressing soil to allow for better germination for that. So that also fell into those holes, and then we overseed on top of that, so then that seed has something nice to germinate on with some nutrients behind it. So with that being said, the goal for us is to till top dress on other areas. We'll do that probably every year, we'll focus on that, especially for like our new developed spots. So like I said, the bills are done this year, still need to do some other spots, but mostly the Wellness Center is probably the next spot that we need to do, and then Quaker Hill will need to come soon after that. Couple of weeks ago, I did a plant audit with Renee, she's our horticulturist through Wildwoods, her and then our campaigner, John. We did a walkthrough and kind of did a plant audit for things that need to be replaced. Everything's being documented, and we'll send out some updates soon on that as far as getting those things swapped out. The last thing I wanted to bring up, which I'm sure the majority of you have seen, is we've installed pansies, kales, snapdragons, and daffodils all throughout the campus. So pansies are probably the most eye-opening parts of that. We've put those in our flower beds, and we've put those in all of our raised garden containers. So that being said, those are our fall/winter flowers. They should usually do really well in the fall, and especially when it starts to get cold. So that's usually the plant choice that we'll go after. Daffodils will start probably popping up in February, March timeframe, so that'll kind of just bring a little surprise to you there. But beyond that, that's pretty much all I've got. Thank you all.
Thanks, Daryl, and thanks everyone who's presented. It's pretty neat when you look back and you see everything that everybody's working on. There's a lot going on at Friends Homes always, from celebratory events, weight loss challenges, renovations, projects, landscaping, and a lot of meals being produced here. There's a lot of folks working really hard for your satisfaction. I want to say thank you to the Guilford folks who are watching and listening from afar. And I'm Jordan, I'm the Executive Director for the community. If we have any new residents here today at West or at Guilford, I want to say thank you to you as well for joining us for this Town Hall meeting. We are in the home stretch, so anybody who's dozing off, stick with us. You've run the marathon, you just have a little bit longer to go, okay? Now we're going to, but this might be a challenge because we're getting to the most boring part, the finances. Nobody wants to know about the finances except for a few folks here. I'm just kidding, I really don't know. Census. Well, September ended the fiscal year, right? Our fiscal year runs from October 1 to the very end of September. So I figured I'll put in the September occupancy, so you see where we ended, and it's pretty good, pretty good. We surpassed our IL, Independent Living and Assisted Living budgets. We were a little bit behind in skilled nursing, but that's okay because the other two areas made up for it, and we're very happy with these results. October looks, to continue the trend in November, certainly no exception, so good numbers. And I'm also very happy to share that we ended the year with a positive net operating income variance. For a number of months, we were behind, but we were able to catch up and actually surpass our budgeted net operating income. We received a very generous estate gift, that helped. We took some steps to save a little bit here and there, which helped. If you recall, all year, we were sort of running it up against insurance costs, which were really ballooning, some utility costs and taxes and things like that. But there's a few different adjustments, accounting adjustments that were made towards the end of the year where we were holding back a little bit, and the year comes, we true up everything, and we ended with a slight positive variance. So very good news for our community. Let's see here, our debt was paid down. It's also a good thing. We were holding, we set aside entrance fees from our first wave of move-ins into the most recent phase of construction. We invested that, and we set aside what we call a bullet payment for our bond debt, and we made that bullet payment in September, and so that draws our debt down. So that's a good thing. That also draws our cash on hand down, because that's where we got the payment from, but we were planning on that, we've been planning on that for quite some time. We collected $7 million in entrance fees, which surpassed our budget of 6.4 million. Those entrance fees come from new people who are moving in throughout the year. So that's a good sign. And we spent all of our capital budget, just like we planned to. This is also a very good thing. We spent about $5 million in capital funds. That's really just a reinvestment in the community to keep it running well, to address the needs of the community, whether that's life safety, or transportation needs, or elevators, or equipment, and cooling, even a bocce court. Whether that's life safety, transportation needs, or elevators, or equipment, cooling, even a bocce court. That's all part of that purchase of fixed assets. And we always set aside 5% for our charity care. And that's 5% of our revenue, 5% of the revenue each month. And we dedicate that, we set it aside, almost like escrow, to eventually dedicate that money towards charity, which allows us to remain not-for-profit, tax-free. Our ratios also ended on a very positive note. We surpassed our budget in every category. So all this is to say that the community is financially healthy. That's a very good thing. And I want to point out that we've been very transparent with these numbers throughout the year. Every month, we are sharing the financial health of your community. That's really important. I don't know of other communities, I don't know what they do, but we feel like, I feel like, it's very important that you know. And I always reference households, right? So like in my household, I do the same, you know, with my family. We think everybody's kind of in the same boat, rowing in the same direction if we do that. And so I want that for you all. I want that for us. We're all, we all have the same goals. And that's the long-term financial health of our community. And you should be proud. I, I certainly am. There was a time where we had, you've heard me say this many times, where we had no margin. Can you imagine how scary that must be? I wonder how many people knew that? Did you all know that we had no margin when we had no margin? I don't know. But now you know every month where we stand and this, these financials are actually placed in the lounge here. If you ever wanted to look, you can look in the lounge. And then at Guilford, in the reading room. Every month, Kerry puts them in there. So no secrets here. I told you last month about a pole cord audit. Does anybody remember that? That we're auditing the pole cords here. Those are your emergency pole cords and also some folks have pendants. We just want to make sure that they're working how they're supposed to work. And we feel like it's important to check that and not take that for granted or just to assume. So you may have received a visit from the security department. Has anybody received a visit from the security department checking your equipment? This is wonderful. So glad to see so many hands going up, because I've been told that they've been through every apartment in West, okay? And there are some repairs that need to be made and audit always yields some sort of results. And we're making those changes and repairs and replacements as we see fit. I also sent out a memo a couple of days ago, letting you know about an issue that we're having with Vigil. That's the same, it's a similar, it's a system. We noticed some discrepancies and some intermittent delays when the call system was triggered. It was enough to make us uncomfortable, certainly for myself. I wanted to let you all know in full transparency what we're seeing. So that, number one, if you do have an emergency, pull your pole cord or activate your pendant. If you're able to, call security just to be sure, okay? This is not the forever procedure. This is for right now. But I also want you to know that we have a Vigil rep who flew in this morning. He arrived and he's here on site and he arrived with all kinds of replacement equipment. And he's troubleshooting, working on the system. We take this very, very seriously, which is why we communicated with you. But it's also why we communicated with them. We said, get your guy down here and let's get this thing fixed. So they overnighted the equipment. It arrived this morning. They didn't quite know what they'd have to replace, so they sent a bunch of extra stuff and they're working on that now, okay? So again, if there's an emergency, activate your pendant or your pole cord. But also if you're able to, we realize that you may not be able to, but if you are able to, then call security. Not an ideal situation, but it is the situation that we already have. Greensboro Urban Ministry. You've heard that name because Jasmine mentioned it. And I believe Whitney mentioned it as well. This is a wonderful organization in our community that provides food, shelter and support services, which can be counseling, it can be financial assistance, it can be assistance with substance abuse. We met with them this week. In fact, there was an open invitation to residents to join us and learn more about what Greensboro, Greensboro Urban Ministry does. They were very quick to say that we are one of many, okay? And there's about 28 different food pantries or kitchens in the area. That was eye-opening to me. I didn't realize it. But this organization is sort of like a conglomerate of multiple organizations that came together to address this need in our community. We met with them, we learned about them. We learned that the, the food pantry serves 150 folks a day. And that number exploded by about 30% over the last few weeks with the uncertainty and SNAP benefits and, and some government programming. They also have a wing called Potter's House. They serve 600 each day, three days, three meals a day at Potter's House. They are the only pantry that serves fresh meat and also that they serve folks furry friends as well. So if, if you're a pet lover, they also help with that. We learned that there are 63 families on their waitlist for emergency shelter for housing a family. They have a men's shelter, they have a women's shelter, but they also have a family shelter. And there's 63 additional households that are in need and on a waitlist. So what I'm, what I'm saying is, is there is a significant need in the community and that, this is just what they know about. Remember, there's many other organizations out there, but we happen to have a relationship with them. That's really, that's really the neat thing. We recently sat around, and I say we as a, the management team, and we really labored over what's happening. We're seeing an explosion of need. It's the holidays. You know, there's no shortage of need and, and, and I'm going to say the directors over lunch said, is, what can we do? Is there something we can do? We already had the food pantry, the food drive in, in mind and planned, and you heard about that earlier. And so that is one thing that we can do. And we're asking that you go in your cupboard and you find something and you bring it down. And if you need help bringing it down, let us know. We can come and get it for you. I feel like one of the barriers, one of the biggest barriers is the act of actually doing it. Going into your cabinets, pulling something out, remembering and bringing it down. What do you want? We'll come get it. We'll figure it out our way. Call, call reception, call Bernadette. We'll figure it out. Sorry, Mark, I didn't run this by you. I apologize. For a good cause, Mark. And Daryl, I should say Daryl. That's one thing that we can do. We can all give. My wife is going food shopping with our boys. And we will be making a, a contribution from our household and it'll be a lesson for our boys in how to be generous. But I want you to know also that when we talk about charity funds, it gives us an opportunity to be generous from a community perspective financially. And on, I think it was Monday, it was, we, we handed Greensboro Urban Ministry a $10,000 check. They have tremendous purchase power, more so than if I took $10,000 and went to the supermarket and bought $10,000 worth of things. They could get five times as much as what I could do. And it was a wonderful opportunity. We asked a few residents to join us in that presentation. And we know that that money would be put to good use. We also shared information with our employees. We honestly don't know where a lot of our employees stand from a financial perspective. But Greensboro Urban Ministry provides a lot of resources to folks in need besides just food and housing. There's a lot of other things that they can help with. So we provided education to our residents. And we told, or sorry, staff, we told our staff, look, if you need help, this is a great option. And this may not be the last check that goes to them. We thought we would start here. We want to be generous as a community. And I think it's important for you to know that and to know how we're directing some of our charity. So that's why we're sharing today. I think it's a good thing. So please, reach out to us if you'd like to also be generous. I don't care if it's one can. I will come get it. If you want me to come get it, I certainly will. But similar to you. So thank you all. I am being called, yes. Oh, that's right. Would you like to say something about that?
In the gift shops on both campuses, we have some food that you can purchase, some canned goods, non-perishable items available for sale to be able to donate into the boxes on each campus.
Trying to make it easy. I have one more slide and then we'll get to your question. And I love to end on a high note. I think that was a high note, but here's another one. We will be celebrating our second annual Friendsgiving with staff next week. This is something that we started last year. And it's basically all the staff are invited to come to Kobel's in the solarium. Different days, depending on the neighborhood where you work. Honestly, they could go to either. It doesn't matter to us. But we share a Thanksgiving meal together. It's just a staff event. I want to thank Morrison. Morrison is our food service provider. They've donated all the food, so we don't pay a dime for the food. And they donate their time in preparing it and serving us. It's a big buffet. And I just wanted you to be aware, this is one of the many little things that we do to create a positive culture amongst our staff. So it's just a time where they kick back, relax, break bread together, have a good, good time. And it really, for us, it kind of sets off the holidays for our, our staff events. We'll do a nice holiday party in December as well. And it's just relaxing and enjoyable. And again, I just think it's important that you know, because sometimes people say, well, what do you do for the staff? This is one little example of what we do for the staff. And then the managers get to serve, which we're happy to do. It's a lot of fun. Serving clear. Okay. Now, there are some hands that went up in the presentation. We want to get to those. But we also have questions that have arisen from Guilford. And so the folks over at Guilford are sharing their questions and we have a little system that we're going to try out. For the first time, we're going to try it out and see how it goes, because we're learning how to use this remote presentation system here. So bear with us. Please wait for a microphone to come along. If you raise your hand, we'll be happy to come to you. For the folks in Guilford, if you have a question, please raise your hand. And we have designated people who will come to your assistance.
Just a reminder that the Urban Ministry, the, the money that you donated to CROPP goes through Urban Ministry. 25% of that stays in Greensboro to be used here locally. So you can still donate through this month. If you have not done it and would like to, please let me know. Thank you.
It's a great reminder. Thank you.
We had some people on the side of the room, so they couldn't hear what she said. So she was saying that the money that was raised for the CROPP wall goes to Urban Ministry as well. 25% of that stays here in Greensboro and you can still give through the end of the month.
On the porch cleaning, this is for the EBS person. Thank you so much. Does that include the porches on Quaker, in the townhomes in Quaker Hill Lane? And how will that be scheduled? Will we know ahead?
So it's part of your monthly clean. So depending on that, how that falls in your schedule, when you get your door hanger, the day that you get it for the month of November, and then depending on pollen season when it ends, that's when your porch cleaning will be happening. You'll have two people coming into your apartment to come in.
I don't quite understand. And I, the last week or so, I thought maybe my air conditioning system was broken. So I want to know if this HVAC changeover thing for seasonal, is that just for common areas or does it include all of our individual apartments?
I'll, I'll try to be real brief but real direct on that answer. We have a complicated system. The common areas can do heating and cooling. It's served by a four-pipe system. All of the resident units in the 1,000 to 5,000 are served by what's called a two-pipe system, supply and return. So we have to choose whether those pipes are hot or whether those pipes are cold. So we have to pick. And in the summer, we choose cold because we want to be air conditioned. And then there comes a time where we switch it to heat for the winter. And unfortunately, with the way the thermodynamics and the pipes and everything work, we can't change it from one to the other really fast or it might should break the pipes. So we have to do really something. So we've changed to the heating system so far. If we get super high temperatures, I will strongly consider going to cooling for a few days. But it's, it's not an easy, fast process. Every time we, we hit the button, it takes about 48 hours to make the change.
So that does include our independence?
It 100% only includes your independence. That's correct. If you're, you're, after we made that changeover, when I sent that announcement, letting everybody know we made the change, the air conditioning no longer works, unfortunately.
Okay, I have some comments and questions for folks at Guilford. The first one is from Mr. Derek Davis. He says, "Kudos to folks at Kobel's for a wonderful breakfast spread for the veterans' breakfast. Well done." And thank you, Derek, for that. And the next question is from Mr. John Sexfield. "Can Friends Homes use the house most recently purchased on Ridgecrest that is empty to use for one of Urban Ministry's families in need?"
The house in Ridgecrest is currently occupied and will remain. So we've used it multiple times for many different reasons that are resident-related. There is a house very close to the Guilford community that has been vacant for a very long time, but it is in horrible disrepair and we wouldn't be able to do anything with, it's a tear down. So I love the creativity. I love the, the heart and the spirit behind that request. But that house is currently occupied, honestly, by residents.
Hello?
Yes, Chris?
I'm excited about the walk around the pond, the other half of the pond. Is there going to be some sort of a, a kind of a meeting to talk, to let us know what the plans are? Maybe have some input back to what, you know, what our interests are might be?
Well, I would say plans are already underway. If you have a specific suggestion that hasn't, or you and I have, we've spoken. If you, if there's new suggestions that somebody has, they are welcome to reach out to us. Mark is always available, I'm sure, so.
Where's he at? Where's Chris? There he is. So if you remember the meeting we had in the conference room, me, you, Steve and Mark, and we kind of matted out on there. That's, that's what we're moving forward with. Mark did take some opportunity to find some areas that have been brought to his attention to improve existing sidewalk, existing crosswalks. But what we covered in that meeting will be, will be executed.
I guess the question leads me to think that there's new thoughts. Okay. So yeah, I would just. Yeah, yeah. There's probably going to be a point where it's like, okay, we're, we're starting. So we, we can't make a change, so speak now.
Okay, um, this is to Mark. I wanted to know if this, is it possible for us to have access to both heating and air conditioning, given the North Carolina weather? And I believe that when I moved in, I did have access to both. And that at some point last year, the decision was made to limit our access to the air conditioning. So my question, is it possible for us to have, and then also I wanted to point out that we've got one day, it's supposed to be 70 degrees, I believe, on Saturday. And then one day next week is supposed to be 73 or 74. So if you could give us access, I've been trying everything possible to try to get the temperature down in my apartment at night so I can sleep.
You're, you're one of the people that, that I'm not going to make happy. And, and again, there's an equal, if an orange amount that is happy with having the heat. You, you ask that question, it's going to be really hard for me to answer because the, the second question's based on the first part. Is it physically possible to have heating and air conditioning? In years past, the system ran chilled water through the entire building all year. And you were throwing all of your hard-earned money. you were throwing all of your hard-earned money down the drain, because it was thousands and thousands of dollars a month being wasted on chilling water for air conditioning that a global use of the building is not using. And then, the most expensive way to provide heat in that cool mode is electric resistance heating. So is it possible? Yes. Does it raise our electric rates in the seasons thirty to forty percent? Yes. Is that the best choice, or how the building is designed, it work? No. In that system where you were comfortable having both, does it work in the healthcare areas? No. They were not able to achieve the heating necessary, because the emergency heat is only made for short-term durations, and those emergency heating elements burned up and stopped working, and those folks didn't have heat for a very long time. So things are possible. It's not all black and white, it's very nuanced, but I cannot recommend that we run cooling in forty-two-degree water through these pipes in the winter. Now, in these solar months where it's kind of hot, kind of cold, yes, I'm open to making those changes. I first saw that we had sub-thirty-degree temperatures last week, and I want to make sure that our system is working properly. If we're not getting back into freezing temperatures, I'm, like I said earlier, I'm fully committed to looking at these forecasts and making adjustments. This isn't a, we have to do it once a year type thing.
I'm not sure I understand. The only way to, if you're running cold water through the pipes, it's not possible to also run hot water through the pipes? Is that correct?
That's correct. There's only one pipe, and you can only run one temperature water through it at a time. It's either hot or cold, and it takes forty-eight to seventy-two hours to change from one to the other.
Okay, we have another question from Guilford, from Ms. Phyllis Mueller, and that is, can we add some low lighting to walkways?
This is Mark Ford answering that question. I think it's a wonderful question. Daryl and I are teaming up and working on a solution right now, and we, without spoiling it for those that know, we are currently testing two solar-powered ballards on campus right now in a low-lit walkway area. So I encourage folks to find them and tell us what your feedback is. I mean, I'm still aware of a lot of research on it, but yes, it's a solution that we are actively working on, and it's a, it's a big thing for us to set standards. So we've got some sample baller lights that are about hip height, and they, they are, so far, I think they're working pretty well, but we're learning a lot, and we have long-term testing to make sure that it's a product we want to invest in and create this campus standard. So it's a, it's a slow but steady, calculated process.
Yeah, I think, you know, there's probably a time where people, I think I've seen where, you know, people just say, "I've got an idea, purchase it, install it, great," and then there's no standards. And what we're trying, you know, so you end up with six different types of lights throughout the community, right? All these different, just, there's no cohesiveness, and what Mark is saying is, number one, we want to identify a good product that's gonna last long. And then, number two, is we want to create a standard, and so whenever we need a low light throughout our community, it's the same low light. And so we have cohesiveness, we don't need as much replacement parts, inventory, we, you know, it's a much more sustainable approach, it's thoughtful and methodical. That's why we're taking our time with this. Enjoy the scavenger hunt somewhere in Friends Homes.
This is going back to Mark. You're a very popular guy today. As far as the heating system, Mark, where do the Villas stand on that? Are we, do you have to adjust that yourself?
So the Villas are a different style that matches everywhere else on campus, where there's a different set of controls. The only areas this really affects is the one thousand through five thousand, and our healthcare venues at West. Everywhere else, including those at Guilford, are typically ready to either run on heat pump systems or a four-pipe system that has the ability to go from one to the other. So they're all individually controlled elsewhere.
Chair BB, it's three fifteen PM.
All right, we've got another question from Guilford. Actually, first, two compliments. This is from Ms. Wynne Herdlicka. Two compliments. "One to dining, wonderful job during the Ruth Refresh, you're doing a great job." The other is Daryl. "Wonderful job on the flowers, it is beautiful." Now, Daryl. Windows in January? I'm not sure why you'd want to wait, or I'm not sure why you don't wait until after the pollen season. And she wasn't very pleased with the company used last time. That's a summary.
So we do this in January, just because it's a good start to the year. It gets everything kind of fresh and started. I think, too, on that side, we do save a little bit of money, too, in January, because it's quarter one of using window here, so we do save a little bit there. There's, we had talked about maybe changing it, Jordan and I have, but January, we've done it that way for two years now, and it worked out for the most part last year, so that's what we're gonna continue with in January this year. If you have issues, though, please, anybody, not just Wynne, please let us know while the vendor's here. Do not wait for them to leave and then come back. So that's, when we start that process in January, if they, for some reason, if you say they missed my windows, let me know. Again, that'll be part of the memo and all the announcements that come out, of who to reach out to, depending on what neighborhood you live in, and then that person will kind of manage to make sure that Window Year comes back to touch base with them.
Thanks, Wynne.
I have two things I want to talk about. One is the window washing. Last year, when they had the window washing done, and I think I mentioned this to Matt one day...
Can you hold the microphone closer, as close as possible?
Can you hear me now?
Much better, yes.
Last year in January, when they cleaned the windows, they were also cutting the grass. It was horrible. It was a horrible situation. The wind was blowing, they cleaned the windows, and the windows were dirtier than they were to begin with after they left. And that was not their fault, it was the fault of the, of the Good Lord. We couldn't help that. So I think...
We have no control over the Good Lord.
Yep. I think January is not a good idea to do it in. I agree with whoever was talking about after the pollen. And the second thing I wanted to mention was, I forgot what it was. Oh, I know now. It has to do with the heating and the air conditioning, and the adjustments that they could make or not make, you know, with our thermostats. I've been here ten years, and before, in two thousand fifteen, we could adjust our thermostats. And I don't understand with everything that's going on with the budget and et cetera, and the monies that we're spending for here and there, we need to, in my opinion, we need to upgrade our heating and air conditioning system so that we don't have this area and this issue.
Okay, careful what you ask for. That's a big statement, big bull statement. No, I think, so we built into our budget the window washing in January, it's gonna be in January this year. We're open to adjusting the timeframe for the following year. We wanted to test out this new company last year. We stopped using one that we'd been using for a few years, we weren't satisfied, and so we hooked up with this new company. They had their availability last year in January, they did a better job, not perfect, but they did much better than what we had with Window Year, and so we booked them. We booked them again for this January, but again, we're open to changing. And I think we have some purchasing power, and so we can, we can, you know, press them a little more and say, like, move it to whatever. When should it be? I'm curious, when do you think it should be?
After the pollen.
Well, when is that? They don't, they don't operate like that. Are we talking April? Are we talking May? May? You'd be happy with May? We wouldn't hear any comments after May. There's still pollen in May. Do you like your green beans crunchy, or do you like your green beans squishy? Hot, cold, soft, crunchy? Cornbread sweet? Cornbread savory? Yes, it's nice. Depends, what do you eat?
Mr. Zuck is not here. But he, but he said that the holiday park, holiday party, we, here would be on December the eighteenth, on Icon, it is the, it's on the eighteenth, not the seventeenth, as he stated.
Yeah, go by Icon. Tim is not here anymore because he's on his way to Michigan for vacation, and I believe he had vacation brain, he got those switched, but go by what's on Icon. Way to down, trust Icon.
Thank you for clarifying that. It's good to have you. We apologize.
Recently, there's been a problem with the buttons we push every night to say we're alive, that record in the security office. Is that part of the visual system that the guys working on?
I believe it's more of the audit than it is what we're doing with the visual system, but we're looking at all that. We're looking at all that. If you're aware of this situation, if you just discovered something, don't assume that we know, okay? So make, make a call down. We get reports on certain things, we get automatic audit reports, but if you discover something, let us know.
I haven't discovered anything, but security has been on occasion coming over, knocking over the door, we're gonna check, or calling, because the system ain't working, and that's been within the last month.
Yeah, right, right. It's all, it's all somehow intertwined. It's a, so, easy answer, yes, it very well could be. Mr. Howke has a question, and you're gonna have a hard time getting to him, right in the center of the room. Do we have any questions for Guilford?
Yeah.
This is just a quick question. What was the total giving for the Crop Walk this year? Maybe I missed it, but I didn't see anything else.
Yeah, we announced a total giving for Crop Walk so far, roughly?
Just below twelve thousand.
You say so far, is it still open?
Just below twelve thousand.
Is it still open?
My understanding is for the remainder of this month, it's still open.
Well, I've chinned in a check on January, I mean, October the first, and ended cash, I don't know what happened there.
There's probably certain times where they do the cashing, I'm not sure, I don't want to speak for them, but if you're concerned...
I get very few deposit slips to use for them, so I have to wait until I fill a deposit slip. I don't get enough to do just partial ones, so there's still that trade to go in, not that we haven't gotten them.
You pile them up?
Yeah.
And then do a big drop? That makes sense.
Thank you for doing it.
That's right. First of all, thank you for your donation. Second of all, thank you for your patience. Third of all, thanks for asking, just to clarify, because there's other people that might be in the same boat as you.
I'd be glad to wait.
Okay, I received word that there's no further questions at Guilford. I don't see any further questions here, last chance. Okay, seeing none, thank you for coming, we enjoyed it, do the same time next month.